This is the meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals taking place December 12th at 2023 at Town Hall. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
My COVID open meeting statement. Pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, in-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by turning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in the public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your questions, comments prior to or during the meeting to jbattersby@northandoverma.gov. That's J. Battersby, B.A.T.T.E.R.S.B.Y. at northandoverma.gov. The question in common will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. Okay. Next up, we have the acceptance of the minutes for November 14th, 2023, which were emailed.
I move that we accept the minutes.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And we now have the continued public hearing for 315 Turnpike Street, which I believe we are just continuing. Correct, Attorney Johnson?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we're continuing the press for the finding because of decision, the applicable period on the variance will not expire, I think, until Monday.
Okay. Well, then hopefully, we don't have to see you back here in the new year. At least not on this.
Unless you want me to come to withdraw it. If I can do that by letter, that would be great, and I don't have to come back, but if...
He has to come in. Oh.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I guess you will have to come back in January.
I had a feeling I would. I think that'll make 11 months in a row, but I'm happy to come back.
So, if you come back and withdraw it, there's nothing to read, right? I just want to, I just want to, if there is, I want to make sure I bring it with me.
Nothing to read. Nothing to read.
Okay.
There will be nothing to read. I hope you have a happy holiday.
Thank you. If I said there was something to read, would that mean I wouldn't have to come back?
I'd vote for that.
We banish you from the land.
Have a very happy holiday.
You too. All right. Next up is a new public, oh. Oh. My apologies, Attorney Johnson. We need to do a vote to continue the finding for 315 Turnpike Street. Can I have a first?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night.
Good night.
Good holiday.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Next up is our new public hearing for 38 Putnam Road. Putnam, Putnam Road.
Thank you.
So first, we're just going to read in the legal notice.
Okay.
And then we will let you present.
Okay.
So if you want to stand at the podium, you can. If you want to sit, that's fine, too. I don't want you to feel you have to stand. If you want to sit at a table and present.
Notice here, notice, notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street in North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, December 12th, 2023, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Karen Davis for property at 38 Putnam Road, MAP 21.0, parcel 0006, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the R4 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.3 yards setbacks, Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements for one-side setback in the R4 zoning district for the purpose of replacing the existing breezeway, garage, storage area, structure with an 838-square-foot breezeway, garage, structure. Specifically, applicant has requested a side setback needing a relief variance of 7 feet 5 inches. Side setback proposed is 7 feet 7 inches. Side setback required per Table 2 is 15 feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the Office of the Zoning Department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, Alexandria A. Jacobs, Esquire, Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Now you're good to come up. And just basically tell us about your project, what you're looking for.
So I currently have a pretty standard Cape-style home that had a breezeway and garage attached at some point, which are neither are code compliant, and the breezeway itself is about three feet wide, and the garage actually overhangs, the garage roof overhangs the breezeway, so the breezeway is virtually unusable, unsafe. And then the garage is meant to be a two-stall garage, and it's not wide enough to actually fit two cars. So in order to provide safe entry into the home, especially during inclement weather, I am looking to extend the breezeway to a usable width of eight feet and slightly extend the garage so I can fit two vehicles as well, which sets into the 15-foot setback requirement.
Okay. We have two letters from Butters, I think is all we have, in support of your project. And obviously, nobody is here.
I think it's two inches under a half, or one inch under a half for the amount of variance we're asking for.
What do you need, a butter bullet? I was going to say, do you ever actually use the breezeway with that overhang?
I can't. Like, I have to walk up the stairs sideways, because even if I have a laptop bag or something, it's just not wide enough.
Is 46 is the abutting property, the?
Yes. Yep, on the right hand. So facing the property, 46 is the right side of Butter.
The right side of Butter?
Not the abutter where there's the, I did have a phone conversation. I wrote the left side of Butter note explaining what I was doing, and she called me and just basically let me know that she has outdoor cats, and she wants to know when the construction is happening so that she can keep the cats inside and safe during the construction. But otherwise, she didn't seem to have any concerns. And I offered up to put up, you know, privacy barrier, like a bravita or something, in case she wanted, you know, just more of a natural barrier today than what's there today.
So it does look like it's currently a one-car garage, and you're going for two in the front, and there's a garage door in the back, and it sounds like you're thinking about that for another car?
No, the garage door in the back is more just for lawnmower access and, you know, putting the patio furniture in, into the garage for storage. So it's more...
Kind of what I figured in the opening statement.
Yeah, it's more ease of access.
That is so smart. I wish I had that.
A lot of people have been doing that recently, and it's like, oh, man, why were they now doing this 50 years ago?
I'm so jealous. I wouldn't be able to do it in my house, because where the foundation is, and...
Yeah, they may not, like, leveling-wise, it may not work, so I may have to get, you know, two double storm doors. But yeah, that's more just ease of access.
But still, being able to go right in and out of the garage, I'm jealous. Yeah, jealous. That's all I'm saying. All right. Does the board have any other questions?
It looks good to me.
I've been driving by it to just look at it as well. And to me, the most positive thing is the Butters supporting the initiative. So, looks good to me.
Yeah, consistent with the neighborhood, there's other, without measuring anyone else's setbacks, there's, you know, others that are in that range.
I didn't see many others that had two car garages. Well, both had no garage or one garage, a one-car garage. I don't know if that's to be considered on that.
But it's sort of becoming more and more of a requirement at this point to sell the house. Yeah, and I noticed that there is more room on the garage side of the house than on the other side, in terms of where the next house is over.
Yeah, so the Butter to the right actually got a variance within the past 10 years to put in a double garage, actually. So I think the variance, the setback on that side is more like six feet.
Right.
From my property line. So, yeah, this will maintain a little bit more setback than that.
Is there a second floor going over the garage?
No. Yes. Yep.
The rear elevation diagram is a little confusing, but yeah.
Yeah, I think that was just how the roof line had to accommodate the breezeway, because the breezeway is a little bit, the lot is sloped, so the breezeway has to be higher.
We're going to put like existing on one side and proposed on the other, and especially it kind of doesn't make, didn't compute for me. It took me a long time of looking at it, so I figured it out.
So the name to the right has a six-feet setback, but you have 21 feet on that side.
Yes.
So you'll still have plenty of access to your rear yard. You don't have to get a piece of equipment back there or something?
Yes. Yep.
Or you go straight through the garage and out the other door.
Exactly. As long as there's no support.
I do have young drivers. I'm really hoping that's not the case, because it's probably not intentional.
Young drivers' comments, that resonates.
Yeah, I mean, just getting in there today would be dicey, because the garage itself is not much wider than the door, so you really have to pull in at an angle.
But young drivers love a challenge.
Not in mom's car.
No.
Not in mom's car. Okay. Does the board have any other questions?
No other questions.
Any other questions? Anybody? Okay. So at this point, I would open up for public comment.
The dally is full.
Jam-packed. So the next part of the process would essentially be, we would close the public comment portion of it. The board would discuss, at that point, there's no more questions to you, there's no more comments or questions to us, and then at that point, we vote.
Okay.
So if that's the route you want to go, we'll go that route, and you'll be in and out of here.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion?
It sounds like we already have it.
I did, I did drive by it as well, after I talked to you, and I drove by, and I said, yeah, I can see you walking up there sideways, because that was pretty narrow.
Everybody looked impossible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looks good to me.
So you call him? You don't call me?
No, I ran into the Y. We were getting age-appropriate exercise.
I go to the gym.
I go to the Y.
That was, actually, that was a business meeting we had.
Oh, all right. Well, I didn't mean to derail this meeting, so.
As long as it wasn't zoning board.
All right. Well, so no question, no comments? We got nothing?
No, I got nothing.
So do we want to take a vote?
Sounds good. Sure.
Okay, you're up.
Okay. I make a motion to approve a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.3 yards setbacks, Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements for one-side setback in the R4 zoning district for the purpose of replacing the existing breezeway, garage, storage area, structure with an 838-square-foot breezeway, garage, structure. Specifically, applicant has requested a side setback needing a relief variance of 7 feet 5 inches. Side setback proposal is 7 feet 7 inches. Side setback required per Table 2 is 15 feet. And we have plans to be referenced. One plan by Sullivan Engineering dated November 9th, 2023, and seven sheets of plans titled Davis Residence dated October 29th, 2023.
Did you say how many pages?
Yeah, seven. Seven sheets.
Thank you. I will take the first vote with an aye.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Aye.
Steve. Okay, so unanimous? So we are all good?
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You'll get the decision in about a week? A week-ish. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Okay. No one make a motion to close the meeting?
Nope.
We got a couple more items. Okay. Next up on the list is the continued discussion on the calendar. So everybody got, have a good night, everybody got an updated calendar. Please make note that we are not here the second Tuesday of every month throughout the entire month. Example, we have May 21st, which is obviously not the second. I think there's a few other dates, so please be mindful when you are marking it on your calendar so that everybody can be here. We had to play, move the meetings due to other board meetings and town meeting. So can I have a vote to approve the 2024 calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are not skipping a July meeting this year. That is another, thank you, building commissioner. We will be here in July unless there are no applications.
Or no vote to that. Or no board members.
Or no board members. Board members try to be here. Okay, up next, next month, so there's two things that are actually going to be taking place next month. We will be getting a new associate to the zoning board, so you two will no longer be alone on the associate's role. He will be joining us, hopefully, in January. At our January 9th meeting, we also have elections. So our associate members, it has been a standing rule for quite a few years, associate members are allowed to vote. They unfortunately cannot put their name in the hat to get an officer position. So, whatever. Well, I want you to know, your vote counts. It matters. It is to be taken. What?
As I explained earlier to Bill, I will be moving sometime in the next six to eight months. I would be happy to become an alternate if it would help somebody who wants to hold an office, get on the...
So here's how it works. We can't move you down. We can only move you up. So...
There's no up.
On the hierarchy, there's an up. So essentially, what I would say is let the board, the select board know that, is your appointment up in June? Do you know?
I probably guess.
Okay, because I know there's a...
This sounds familiar.
There's a few of us who are up this June. If your appointment is up in June, which I think Jen might be double-checking, then I would let the select board know that they, you would not like to be reappointed since you will be moving. And then I don't know who's up in line. I think Laura.
Jim was here first.
So whichever one got here first will move up to be a board member. So then whichever one of you it is, next January, you can just put your name in the hat for an officer position.
Jen, do you know?
I'm looking right now.
I could have sworn you were at the first meeting, so if it was at the same meeting, then...
I think you guys showed up to the very first meeting at the same time. However, Laura was sworn in, and Jimmy was not.
That granular. Okay. That's right, this is town. Sorry.
Jimmy attended the meeting before he was sworn in.
Right.
The earlier meeting, but just as a, just as a spectator.
So Laura, since you were a few seconds before his swearing in, you're next up in line. Get ready.
Fantastic.
I know there are a few of us who have our appointments up come June. I know I am one of them. I think there is two others. I'm not sure who. But regardless of that, January, we have officers. So essentially, board members, excluding you, chair, clerk, and vice chair is always up for grabs. If you would like to put your name in the hat for any one of them, please do so. Yes.
So I've been doing, I've been doing this for a few, for a few years, and it seems, okay, it seems, so I'm not keeping, I don't know it factually, but when Paul was the chair, it seemed like for at least three years, I mean, it was, things, nothing changed. The roles did not.
No one wanted it.
Now, okay, so I'm almost done here. Chair, Esquire, all that other stuff that I'm not. So then Ron went into the role for one year. Okay.
Six months.
Well, and now Alexandria, Alexandria, you went in. Okay, and, and, and so, and now Frank is in the role. Okay, now, I'm just a board member, but I would prefer more continuity. I think we would be more effective as an organization. I mean, I think two years, one year it takes just to get, to get up to speed. Okay, and then now we're changing again. So my, what I want to share with the group is, is instead of it being an annual, I mean, I would say a minimum of a two-year assignment is, is my suggestion that I'd like us to talk about.
I have, so I'm going to just go with, I know, and it's probably part of the rules, we do have to vote every year.
Yeah.
Now, that does not mean, and this is the thing, I know I kind of threw on Frank unwillingly the position of clerk, because I have no, I had no choice. We have to have a chair, we have to have a vice chair, and we have to have a clerk. Period. I would never sit here and say, nope, forget it, I'm out, somebody take it. I think putting the position of chair especially onto somebody who does not want it, it's a lot of work, and I don't think that's fair. If, you know, this is a volunteer board, it takes a lot of work. I'm not going to put that on somebody if they don't feel they have that kind of time and ability to commit. If you feel we should have two years, the board is more than free to throw me into the hot seat of the chair for another year. I'm not going to sit here and hold it hostage, but I'm also not going to sit here and force it on anybody, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and I mean, to Steve's point, like, I do think some continuity is good. I don't want it to be like a 10 or 15-year.
God, no.
Right. And I don't think, well, I was going to say, and I don't think you want that either, right?
If a 40B comes around, I'm out.
So the length of term is one year.
Right. So we have, and I believe we have to, as a board, collectively vote. And like I say, I'm not sitting here saying I'm, I'm going to throw it to the wind if the board, but I'm also not going to hold it hostage. There are, there have been in the past where the position of chair has been held by one individual for extended periods of time, which I think is a disadvantage to the rest of the board, because it, it then puts a board at a disadvantage if, for whatever reason, that current chair were to leave, it's leaving somebody to pick up the slack. I don't mind keeping it, but like I said, I'm not going to hold it hostage. It is, it is a collective vote from everybody.
Could I ask a general question to our current officers, whether they are inclined to keep their roles for another year?
Well, and you'll have to answer now. This is something, food for thought.
Well, I'm okay with it, but I'm also open if someone else wants to give...
I was going to say, I'm in the same position.
I'm still in the learning curve, as Jen knows. I had a review with her today, a couple of comments.
And that's funny.
And you, you've all helped me, actually. So three, four more years, I'm going to have it down.
That's how I feel about parenthood.
Three, four years, you'll be right into that top role, I can see.
Exactly. I'm prepping you for it.
I was realizing, though, as I was reading, I don't have any flourish to it like Alan did. You know?
You got to work on your own style. You can't, you can't match his.
No, I'm not trying to, no, no, not trying to mimic him.
I would describe Alan as someone who flourishes, fair enough.
You did for that.
For that, yes.
At the end, he did. Yeah. Yeah.
Don't forget, Alan was on the board for, I think, over a decade. So, you know, again, he had to work himself up to it.
Yeah.
So food for thought, if anybody would like to put their name in for something else, email. If you don't want to, we can be silent until January, and...
And it'll be a surprise.
And it'll be...
Can we create a couple more positions?
Yeah, okay, we're going into 24. Okay, don't mess me up. Okay.
Can we create a couple more positions so everyone gets a title?
You know what?
We could have fun with what those titles are.
Email the, the select board. I think they're the ones who give us our titles. So that, that's it for officers' position discussion. Again, food for thought, and we'll take a vote January to hold the position for the following year. Good?
Good.
All right. Next thing is, we got a correspondence on 40B. I think it's just discussing...
Eileen.
Yeah, Eileen, but we don't really do anything with this.
So you know it coming down the line?
No.
Accessory structures, accessory living.
Excuse me?
Yeah, they want to make garages into living areas.
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, accessory dwelling units, yeah.
It's not in it yet. It's coming, it's coming down. It's getting discussion. It's going, it's before the select board right now.
Can you explain this to me a little bit better? You said turn garages, like garages for...
Anything. You put another building up on the lot and rent it out.
So you're saying, wait a minute, are you saying I can have a she shed?
Yep. No, it's not a she's, not for you. You can rent it out.
Yeah.
But no, I want to rent it out to me.
It doesn't have to be a family member.
But yeah, it's similar to an in-law suite.
Yep.
Okay, okay. It's similar to an in-law suite, but without the requirement that it be given to family.
No, it's not even both an in-law suite. That's the problem. You could put a different, separate building on the lot. What just came through was, it came through because of the cities.
We're not a city, we're a town.
I know, but it came through because of the city, Haverhill, Lawrence, and stuff like that. People were converting their garages into apartments. So what's the better thing? At least make it legal so you have inspections now and you have some control over it. So you know, make sure they're safe. That's what we kind of brought this on. It's supposed to be for affordable. A lot of people cannot afford North Andover. So...
It's been a national tragedy.
It is, exactly. And it's taken off really because of, we are limited on space in North Andover.
Okay.
We still have to apply for like a special permit or something like that.
It hasn't gone that far, but it would have to, it would still be, it probably would be by right.
But it would have setback requirements and size limits.
Exactly.
Okay, so I was going to say, so we're waiting for the select board to vote on this?
It probably not going to be for another year before they even vote on it.
Oh, so I probably won't be here. No, but...
No, I'm just saying, just look at, if you're looking, it's in front of everybody right now. It's one of the hottest topics as far as building going on.
So is there even going to be a point in the future of voting on in-law suites, and whether or not they're allowed, if you could just make your little garage...
Because the in-laws, our biggest thing is that we didn't want to rent it out.
Right.
This one.
There's no stops.
To some extent.
Yeah.
Paul, with this then, okay, so what I thought I heard you say was, we've been dealing with, you know, a lot of, I'll call it conversion things. What I heard you say was, they, this could be a structure that could be put on to, so assuming that they have the lot, or they asked for the variance, or I mean, will, that's why you're bringing this up, is it could be new construction, or it could be a garage conversion?
Most likely, it's going to be new construction.
And, and, and I'm just paraphrasing what I just heard, which I didn't know anything about, is that this is, so we've been dealing with, most of the cases that we've dealt with are in-laws and, and, you know, families staying together, whereas now, this could be a pure rental property. My gosh, I...
So this is really, because this is going to get, it will be for us, and it's going to be for zoning, because...
But we have to wait for the select board to make the determination.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, just gear up, because our meetings are going to get busier, when it does come through, right?
Well, depending on...
You know what I mean, Mike?
Depending on how they do it, if it's as of right or by special permit, or... Yeah, if it's by right, and they are not... Yeah, if it's by right and they are not requiring an additional variance, then it may not go in front of us at all.
They got to put some guy, because you can't put things up, upfoot from the neighbor's yard. They still going to have to.
Wait, well, that's what I mean, is this right, is like, the setbacks will probably stay the same, right? And so if you have a property where you have the room where you can build the thing without going into the setbacks, it won't come to us, right? It'll only be come to us if there's a variance as it would for any other construction like this garage.
It will be probably a whole new set of setbacks for just this, you know what I mean? It's probably not going to follow.
Possibly, although, although what I've seen, how I've seen it implemented in other towns and cities is that they, at first at least, don't actually change the setback requirements. And it means that there's now a lot, that, that you can't use it in every property, right?
It will eliminate some of the problems.
Exactly, and so, you know, you don't end up making the buildings more dense, but you do allow for additional occupancy within these buildings.
Our zoning only allows one building per lot. So this is going to allow one dwelling, so you can put garages on it out. But this is going to allow another dwelling on this lot.
Yeah, I feel like I'm getting smacked in the face with that application we had where they had.
Carriage house?
No, they were, had a two-family here, they had a house here and they were putting a new construction.
Oh, geez, don't bring up.
And because they had two.
Don't bring up Furbraff.
All right, well, we will deal with that issue when it gets thrown our way. Hopefully, it will be for you two to have to deal with. Good luck. I wish you all the luck in the world.
I guess, since you brought up something coming up, is planning or the selectmen doing anything regarding the whole MBTA communities?
Yeah, it's part of, yeah, that's all part of it, too.
Okay, well, guys, guys, let's not get too far off track, okay?
That's the whole thing. They're in, they're in discussion right now.
All right, I, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Oh, oh, hold on.
I, I, we kind of breezed past the lien thing and I don't know anything about what's going on, so.
These are just notices that end up getting sent to us. We don't have to take any action on them.
We don't have to, but so.
No, there's.
Why do we have no action to take?
Yeah, there's no action to take. It's just informational purposes.
Okay, it just looked like she was charged twice and then was charged late fees on that for like a two years, so.
We have no, and I will be honest with you, I'm not 100% sure.
Why does it have to come to us then?
Because it's, because affordable designated units, they, they have to notify the public and they do it through our board.
Interesting. But we don't take any action. We have no control over the amounts, liens, okay?
Does it have to be read and directed?
So, no, it doesn't. So it goes to the town council and the law board, so it kind of gets passed along to them.
Okay, and we just kind of are hanging out on the side. Cool.
Okay. In the lodging, we've seen it.
All right, well, I've seen it.
We have first option to buy it, or these affordable houses, when they go back up for sale again, like we have a formal condo, town has first option to take it.
Gotcha.
And we have to be notified and they'll usually just pass, we don't buy or.
But, but we, as the board, do not have the authority to buy it.
To do any of that. Or to point out if there seems to be a discrepancy in payments.
Right.
Okay, all right, well, good luck to her. Hope she read it and figures it out.
Okay, now I will take a motion.
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are off the record.